Okay, everyone, welcome to the August 29th regular school committee meeting of the Shobo Regional School District. Welcome back, everyone. Not only is it our first meeting, it's the first day of school.
It is.
Clancy's gonna give us a lovely update.
Long one.
That's good. That's all good. And we've got quite a few things on the agenda tonight. Before we jump into them, do we have any citizens' comments tonight on any of the agenda items? Okay? You look like you're in class.
I know.
So, as far as chair updates, I don't have any other than the school committee calendar that is online and in every single meeting packet has been populated with several items that are now becoming our standard discussions at certain times of the year. It's much more robust. We're really thank you for all the things that you added. And I think what we're gonna do is last year, I think worked well, where through the fall months, we had all of Superintendent Clancy's functional areas come and report out to us on what the needs were, what their asks were, what their challenges were. And we're going to not discuss dollars at that point. We'll hold that until we get into budget season and really start talking about where we want to put the money because that allows us to look at what the priorities are from a needs perspective. And then we'll prioritize when we get into talking about the money. Okay? So, that's how we're gonna approach this year as well. We don't have a student yet.
Nope.
Not yet. But Debbie, or I mentioned that's meeting.
We will. So, I'm looking forward to meeting the student. So, we don't have a student reporter.
Who should order it?
I think it was he. I believe his name is there. Colin, it's Colin.
What's his last name?
Louise.
Can I say?
Delisle.
Oh, Colin Delisle! That's awesome! Well, we're waiting for you, Colin, next meeting. Can't wait to see you. He's a great kid, just saying. Okay, well, they all are, but. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Superintendent.
Great, thank you. So, this is, as I said to Chairman Ramosco for this meeting, there's a lot of information I'm gonna be getting up tonight and basically just kind of updating you because a lot has happened since our last meeting. So, this is a normally, abnormally long superintendent's report. I know that Todd Mottwire, our assistant superintendent, is also gonna speak to one or two things. I've got quite a list here. I'm gonna try to go through as quickly as I can, and then I'll maybe stop at the end of every single one, make sure that we don't have any questions that you'd like us to go back after. The first one that I'm gonna speak to, I don't know if you can put the superintendent's report up there or not, that would be great if you can. The first one I'm gonna speak to is kind of exactly what Chairman Ramosco was just saying. There is a real rhythm that you can feel being developed in the school district right now. And, you know, one of the custodians said to me early in the game, "We know exactly what you're looking for this summer." And so, this summer was a really good summer for that kind of thing, whether it's purchases of supplies, whether it was a maintenance of the buildings, whether it was fiscally-oriented things, whether it was human resources-oriented things, whatever. Everybody kind of seemed to know. So, that rhythm was really, really good this summer and came into play very, very well. The audits are being orchestrated right now for the fiscal piece. You'll hear, I'm gonna speak to it in a little bit, but you'll hear from Pat next meeting because it's basically our year end for one and the beginning of the fiscal year for the second one. And so, she's gonna have all of that kind of detail in the next meeting. But the auditors have come and already started some of their preliminary work. I'm gonna talk about the administrative retreat quickly, so I'm not sure if we can go to that slide. What I thought I would do is I put up just the type of agendas that we ran on. Our administrative retreat this year was a three-day retreat, and we really hunkered down. And we didn't have lunch, I mean, we ate lunch, but we didn't take any breaks at all. We just started early in the morning and went right through. This gives you a flavor of the type of things that we had talked about. The innovators mindset exercise, Cindy, Martina, Todd did a nice job with that. And we, that, you will find that that will interweave all of our work moving forward this year, including our administrative meetings, including our staff meetings. You will find that that work will continue, and I spoke to that at our first day back as well. Of course, there's always an area for general housekeeping, that kind of thing, and that's the kind of thing that we talked about there. And then, as typical of our larger group meetings, each of our units reports out. And I know for those of you who've attended one of those meetings, you've been there and seen what that's like. So, of course, Lisa Gilbicki reported out, updated. The ALIS updated was a big one, of course, for us because, you know, our teachers have trained. I'm gonna speak to that a little bit more later as well. So, it gave her a chance to have everybody in the room to make sure that everybody was on the same page. Todd and Laura gave a broad overview. We've got a skeletal plan of the digital literacy plan, and so, they spoke to that, looking for feedback from the administrative team facilities. I'm gonna do a little bit of an update for you tonight. Rob will do a much more extensive update for you, exactly as Chairman Ramosco had said. All of those units will come in and start to report out, probably starting the next meeting. And then, of course, Pat always speaks to everybody as per expectations moving forward, how to do proper procurement practices, all that kind of thing. Anne Marie then gives a brief talk on everything HR-related. So, that's kind of the discussion we had with her. Then Joel, Todd, Laura, they've been working together on the communication plan. They did a broad overview of that. Teaching and learning reported out, these are the foci for them. People person L. The NRSD actually was, where it says level of support change, that actually was the high school. We've got some co-teaching models that we're attempting to put into play at the high school. Really, really excited about that. So, thrilled with that. Tony reported on the athletics. Todd reported on the school nutrition. So, that was our first day. The second day was mental health first day training. This was an initiative that we started last year at the high school, and we set some folks off to become train the trainers type folks for us to capitalize when they came back. They've done a fair amount of the training at the high school, and what we did on that second day of training is trained all administrators that are site-based and some extras. So, we opened it up to whoever else wanted to come in and take that training. So, we had quite a full house that day for that. It's about an eight or nine-hour training, so it's pretty intense, but it was really, really well received. The third day is just principles only, so that at that point in time, that's when you're really just talking about things that are site-based specific. So, for example, like Brian Cody talked about residency, I'm gonna talk about residency tonight a little bit, too. Just hammering out final details, what do we do at this stage, what do we do at that stage with the principles? Who's responsible for this work and kind of lays it all out? So, this is, we wrapped up probably just about a two-year cycle worth of work on residency this summer. So, very, very pleased with that. And then, just kind of go to an idea, and there you see the innovators mindset again as we talked about it, George Kearls' book, as the principles and what our expectations were moving forward. So, that gives you a flavor of the administrative retreat. It was very, very successful. I think people felt really good about it. We accomplished a lot, and I think it put us in a good place to start the new school year. Any quick questions on the administrative retreat that you might have? No? Okay. So, if we can talk quickly, talk about the first days back, and we'll put up the slide, we put up the slide on that for the agenda, so you can take a look at that as well. So, the first two days back, the first day is very typical. All staff meeting in the morning until around, this year, probably around 9:30, 9:45 by the time we left. I am gonna show you just a little bit of the slideshow that we showed this year. I won't show it all to you because it's like 10 minutes, but I'll show you a little bit of it today. Thereafter, all of our staff left and went back to the buildings with the exception of some of our cafeteria and custodian people, because, of course, they had to get some work done for the final days. But they'll be being trained for ALIS later in the month of September, so they're the only people. So, this was an enormous training. So, we had just under 600 people online at the exact same time taking the ALIS training this year during this first day. So, the first piece of it was the ALIS training, it started around that 10:15 mark. Some people were finished around that 11:00, 11:15. Others still, 11:45, we're still working through it. Everybody broke around noon and then was back to their regular classrooms and meetings and that kind of thing. Day two, and if you take a look over on the right-hand side where it says the ALIS training schedule is on August 28th, we broke the trains out between the three communities and the high school. So, you can see how that played out between Lancaster. So, they started theirs in the morning, NRHS, and the afternoon in Baltimore, and the afternoon. Todd and I traveled 117 a lot. Actually, the last couple of days, we traveled 117 awful lot. We managed to take in most of the beginning parts of the sessions and some of the debriefs. Each community and the high school did a myriad of five scenarios and then did a debrief after each one of those five scenarios. So, it's like real-life scenarios. So, they weren't, for example, weren't allowed to lock their doors, and we had to work within the realm that your doors are locked. Now, what do you do? I would say it went very, very well from my perspective. I want to give a shout-out to our police department who worked so closely with us on this, so closely, right from the beginning on all of this, right from helping to orchestrate the online piece to the case scenarios. The police really did run at Lisa's, teed it up and got things organized. She's the one that did the actual orchestration ahead of time, but it was really the police that came in and did the run-through of each of these. So, in essence, we now have just under 600 people fully trained on ALIS.
Could you share with people what ALIS means and what it is?
Can you just scroll down there, please? On the right-hand side, thank you Cindy for putting that in here. Cindy said, "I think I should just put it in just in case people say, 'What exactly is ALIS?'" So, ALIS is a proactive options-based plan for civilian response to a violent, critical incident. ALIS authorizes and empowers individuals to utilize human action, building infrastructure, and communication options to increase their chances of survival. So, A would be alert, L is lockdown, I is inform, C is counter, and E is evacuate. So, that's what we left.
So, this is part of the safety plan that's been put in place, and you're just, because I know we were doing components of ALIS, and now you're just digging deeper into...
Yeah, we really, our staff really didn't have to follow the training. They didn't. And so, we're very comfortable. And as I shared with the staff on our very first day, you know, it was my, it's my goal that by the end of September, people felt a quiet confidence that they knew what to do. We will likely not do trainings with our younger kids, like our elementary or middle school kids. We are contemplating what to do in terms of how much training or how little training at the high school for high school students. But we are being very thoughtful in this process, and I think that that is serving us incredibly well because everybody feels very comfortable as we're moving forward right now. I'll talk about this in a little bit more detail when I talk about safety as well. But we do have parent evenings coming up, and your secretary will notify you, will send something out of central office, and our principals will send something further. Lisa Gilbicki will probably send out a notification saying, "Here are the dates." But I've seen the email threads, the dates have all been finalized. Our police will be attending those. Those are basically maybe one-hour sessions with our police and Lisa. It's not really a time for Q and A, it's more an evening for dissemination of information. So, that's exactly what the school district is doing. So, those will all occur in the month of September. So, I'll go into a little bit more detail on safety when I get to that section. So, then, the rest of the day, then, if you were ALIS in the morning, it was regular activities in the afternoon. If it was ALIS in the afternoon, it was regular activities in the morning. I feel very, very good about where we've landed at the end of all of this. One of the things that George Kearls talks about in his book, about the innovators mindset, and maybe Anne Marie will be happy to hand out one of these, we gave these out the very first day, too. And he talks about the three descriptors there, about empowering, unleashing, and leading. And so, Anne Marie, I think it was really your idea, she said, "You know what? I think we should get one of these for everybody who walks in that first day back and reminds us that these are the key words that we want to look at." So, in my presentation the first morning, I broke it into three components. The first was talking about the academic direction for the district for the new year. The second was about the safety, and the third foci, part of the three foci was the George Kearls and the fact that we needed to be mindful about innovation within our classrooms, within our schools, within our units. And so, we gave some good examples, and I think that our staff, I think that they're so ready to take all of this on. So, that's, I'd say it's got NRSD on it, and inside it's got 2018 school calendar when we started this process. So, that's, in a nutshell, really quickly, that's why it's got the three words there, empower, unleash, and lead on the inside. So, that's about our first day's back. Any questions on that? No? Okay. I think it went very, very well, so I'm very, very pleased with where we sent. And the students coming in today was just like the bonus. It was just like everything, really, really smoothly. Commissioner, so our Commissioner of Education is going to come and has chosen us to come and visit again. So, we just had a Commissioner of Education visit a year ago, but we're on the roster. So, I immediately wrote back and said, "We would love to entertain the Commissioner and look forward to seeing him." So, at first, he thought that they were looking for some time in December. We just got an email back late this afternoon saying it may be pushed off into the new year because he's been called to speak at another conference somewhere else in the country. But nonetheless, he'll be coming, he'll join us, and we'll look very forward to that. So, with that, then, Todd, I'm gonna turn it over to you for digital literacy and learning and a broad overview.
Will that slide up? So, in regards to digital literacy and learning, we've spent some time over the summer particularly working with the high school administration and how we're gonna get those Chromebooks out to kids. We've done that. Kudos to Succi and his department on getting those updated and cleaned, et cetera. Also, work extensively with the middle school principals as well as the teaching and learning staff on really having a rollout plan for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and that plan has been mapped out in terms of how we're gonna do that, and also have a digital citizenship lesson and seminar for all students with a Chromebook. But just in terms of taking a look at where we're going with digital literacy and learning, we really wanted to define it in terms of what it's gonna offer us and the ability to use technology to facilitate learning, in terms of finding, evaluating, creating, and communicating information that require both cognitive and technical skill. And we also wanted to identify those really, really important literacy and learning skills that are associated with digitized learning, that really focus on accessing, finding, and verifying reliable, credible sources for kids, positively engaging in digital communities. We know that digital communities exist in a variety of ways, and really teaching them how to positively do that with a digital device in their hands. We want them to understand how online activity and communication impact privacy and security. We've talked a lot about that in Teaching and Learning Department this summer, just in terms of when we are purchasing applications and software for our students and our teachers. We want to make sure that those companies adhere to privacy standards, and that's really, really important. And I'll be talking about that, I think, as the year goes on, even a little bit more in this presentation, but that's extremely important so that student information does not get sold to third parties, et cetera. We want to teach them how to produce information, understand their role as a customer in an online marketplace, as well as understand and evaluate the internet as a means of civic action and engagement, and that relates specifically to the new civic standards that are gonna be coming down from the Mass Department of Ed, particularly at grade eight. So, that coincides well with the middle school implementation of the Chromebook and the digital literacy initiative. But also, we want to really take a look at where we are going. And so, we've had some extensive conversations in terms of what the resource and curricular shift is gonna look like. We want to make sure that our Chromebook initiative, our digital learning process aligns with our curriculum revision cycle, which has been rolled out. We also want to identify online educational resources that are credible, that are verifiable. For years, we've been using textbooks, and those are obviously, you know, credible and verifiable by textbook companies such as Pearson, et cetera. We want to make sure that we are purchasing online educational resources that do adhere to privacy standards and are credible for our kids. We want to have technological applications that facilitate teaching and learning and not replace them. We want to start taking a look at online textbooks and resources that are housed and accessible online when kids are walking home with a Chromebook. All of these textbooks, all of their resources can be housed in this particular Chromebook. And so, we want to start taking a look at, do we need a balance of textbooks in the classroom as well as Chromebooks? How much we want to make that resource shift because so much is available online now? And we've also taken a look at and actually had some conversations with a company called The Learn Platform. The Learn Platform is a place where we can house all of our software, all of our technological software, all of our applications. So, when teachers want to request an application, let's say that they want to download it for students, that goes through a vetting process through the Learn Platform. So, they are a third-party vendor that helps us vet resources, and it also allows other teachers who are using it to assess and evaluate those applications. So, we can take a look at the requests that are made, we can take a look at how it's being used in other districts, we can also evaluate it. And it also allows us administrators to go in and see how many kids and how many teachers are actually using it so that we can get a sense of whether it's worth the money that we're spending on it. So, it's a really, really good platform. I used it in a former district, and it was very, very well received by teachers. And then, in terms of accountability and communication, we certainly want to open this up to professional learning. Martina Kenyon, Cindy Larson, and I did an intro to our middle school teachers yesterday just in terms of the purposes and objectives for digital learning and literacy. We also have a September 14 professional development plan for all of our middle school teachers that we're all gonna deliver, the three of us. We want to look at how we might measure student learning and skill development associated with digital literacy, provide regular updates to the community, the school committee, student showcases of work, and we certainly want to share our best practices within the district. And one of the ideas we've thrown out is offering a parent university so that we can train parents and community members, and we're planning on doing that this fall. So, once kids are issued their Chromebooks, we plan to offer a couple of parent information sessions, actually training sessions, so that we can also train parents in digital learning applications, the Chromebook. We did this in Danvers, it was very well received. We did it on two Saturdays and an evening, and it allows parents to then be able to get into, say, the Google Classroom and obviously engage with the work that their kids are doing.
That's great.
So, that's kind of the overview where we're at right now, but we certainly have a lot in terms of looking at.
So, we're gonna have questions.
Sure.
I know Lynn's got one.
So, nobody denies that computers enhance education or will very greatly enhance education, but this is only for us, and so, we're looking at growing a department just IT, just to buy these because they've got a life cycle.
Correct.
We're gonna be purchasing them continually, we're gonna be maintaining them, we're gonna be warranting them, all kinds of stuff. So, how are you gonna sustain this? We don't, I mean, as far as I can tell, we do not have the funds to do what it is you're looking to do because you're looking at people, you're looking at hardware, you're looking at warranties, you're looking at buying software on a continual basis. Is there any plan for that?
So, I don't think that that's necessarily a component to this piece of the work. That's probably gonna go back to what are we gonna do in a budget cycle to support this or not.
So, what I've asked the question... Are we gonna roll it out before we actually look at it to see where we're going? Are we gonna commit to something without knowing the dollars that we're gonna need to support it?
Oh, no. Again, remember that this is just a broad overview. We simply, we had this ready for December 19th, right? Remember, that was the goal to...
Which concerns me a little bit.
What concerns you?
Well, I mean, at that point, we're talking in the budget cycle, so you're rolling this out, and you're already moving ahead with it, and the question is, is there a plan?
Are there dollars? Let me ask something. Are there dollars that have been earmarked for the effort that you're discussing now, or is this on top of what's already been identified in the budget?
From my lens, this is part and parcel of the work that's just already in play. I don't think that there's anything major here that is a new, brand-new thing in terms of a dollar figure that, this is just that, but to your point, Lynn, it's more about the evergreen. That's really what you're talking about. Evergreen is like saving and sustaining.
Well, actually, we're not just sustaining, we're building. Because we're at, we just added the whole middle school this year. So, it was just eighth grade, this year it's sixth to eighth, and those are getting carried up. And also, we're three years into it, so those three-year computers are getting retired. So, again...
But it just cycles through.
No, because we went from one grade, and now we have, what, five? So, we're adding on, we added on two grades this year, right? So, it's growing without actually talking about how we're going to sustain it. And that's what has me worried because you're actually developing a whole, like, we haven't talked about how, you know, what you had to do over the summer to maintain these and get these back up to, you know, standard to start at the beginning of the year. And we didn't talk about, you know, the cost that you were putting into it. And yeah, it's continuing, but it's growing. And I'm really concerned because we really haven't talked, we haven't seen a plan to see how we're gonna sustain what we're putting into place.
So, I think probably what we need to do is probably put a section at the end of the plan that just basically shows how this, I mean, a lot of it really is just the continuation of the evergreen because these computers just continue to cycle down, is what they continue to do, right? So...
And we'll add, I think Lynn's point of what happened this summer because that was our first trial run of maintaining the equipment that we all asked for. So, I think if you, if it's already done and you've got your information, if you could do a report out at the next school committee meeting on the efforts...
We absolutely could do that.
And I would just add, having done this in another district, that when we talk about kind of moving to an online format, that makes us not buying, not buy 500 copies of a textbook that over time get very, very much outdated, get a lot of wear and tear that we then have to rebind every year that also costs a lot of money.
No.
And when I talk about online educational resources, those are identifying online free educational resources that don't cost money, that are available, zero.
So, we're comparing textbooks, because I really find it hard to believe that a textbook that you're now doing online doesn't have a yearly subscription rate.
It does.
So, in the school books, are what, they recycle every five years? We, you know, we update our school books about every five years? Is that in the cycle? Or are we doing more and more?
I think it's probably later than, I think it's, I don't think it's every five years at all, but yeah, I think your point is well made.
But if you're gonna compare them, I mean, you're not buying books every year, you're buying them every five to seven years, you have a subscription, it's every year. So, you might even be just increasing your budget just for that.
But what you're talking about now, what you've presented tonight, is in FY19's budget, there's no, there's no additional cost.
There's no additional cost. I mean, those Chromebooks for students have already been...
Okay, so I know that's different than what you're asking because you're saying how, and we are moving. I think we are moving into more of a digital environment, and we talk about it every year.
We need to know what it is and where we're going because it is going to increase the budget in a way that we haven't...
To plan for.
We haven't typically looked at. And it sounds great to take the books off the kids' bags and put it on a home book, but now you've just transferred it into another cost, and it's, it could be more substantial with my books.
So, we need to see a plan, I think. I think it's a three- to five-year plan, and I also, one of the things I want to raise too is, I know that this came up with parents, is there's also like a number of textbooks in the classroom, actual physical books. And so, I think we also need to hear what's the plan with that because I know that some parents were, a couple of parents were concerned that they did not, their kids had tests and they didn't, they wanted to bring the textbook home, but they weren't able to. So, like, how many textbooks are you planning on purchasing? Because it's not like we're not gonna have any physical books, right?
Yeah, that would not be the plan. There's always a class set that is available in a classroom that a student will be able to check out, bring home, that is in conjunction with what they bring home in their Chromebook as well.
Yeah. So, I think a plan, I think what you're looking for, we're going back to the digital plan.
Yeah, we need to see...
But we have to have this piece because this is what drives it.
But you need to...
So, it fits into the plan.
Yeah, because this is not a small, it's not like it's a one-to-one, it's actually going to increase because now you have to increase the people in the IT department and in the training and in the subscriptions. So, it might not even, it's not gonna be a wash. You know, because between buying the one-to-one Chromebooks, because we're gonna be buying more and more than every year, and more and more than are gonna be phased out because there's only a certain life cycle of these computers. So, there's, it's not a one, it's not a wash that it's going to increase our budget specifically just for this, and it's gonna be substantial because you're gonna be taking on people and you're gonna be taking on...
So, I think Lynn's point's well-taken as far as what's the plan for outfitting the implements and what's the plan for the support of the implement over a three-to-five, seven-year period? Elaine, you have a question?
Oh, I think the word that comes to mind is projections, like, three- to five-year projection, just the way you're doing business plan, same way we talked about doing the maintenance and overturning of just being able to say like this year, this is what it costs, and this is what it entails next year, this is what it costs, this is what it entails. I think, it sounds like that's what actually Lynn's looking for. Sounds like a good view.
Okay. So, let us know. I think if you can come back at the next meeting and give us an update on, oh, poor girl, the summer Chromebook maintenance pilot, and then let us know when we're gonna see us know when we're gonna see this plan, that'd be on the agenda. Of course, Kathy.
Well, that was a real call for us. No, just to summarize, we were set, what we had budgeted for this year is sustaining your efforts for this year.
Right.
And we had asked for a technology integration plan, and this is the first iteration of it. And as to Lynn and Lynn's point, we just need to roll it out and see what the total cost of ownership is going to be, because as you move forward, I'm not convinced that we may need more IT people. As teachers, there are teachers that could be IT people, but we need to know. And I think that there may be trade-offs in the budget-
I would agree with you.
For other things. But we just, we just need to know, because this initiative and this planning is long overdue. We're behind other districts. So we need to move forward, but we need to know what it's gonna cost us and how we need to plan for it. And I think that that's been addressed.
And I do appreciate, and I don't think it's, we shouldn't acknowledge the fact that you're opening up a training to families.
Ooh.
I think that is-
Outstanding.
Wonderful. Instead of having people, some people are really computer literate, they have no problem with it, others are kind of like, I'm not even sure what to do here. And so you're kind of elevating and putting everybody on a level plane, so I appreciate that. Okay, let's move on.
Facilities. I'll get, I'll get you to put this up. I'm gonna not read through everything. If you take a look up on the screen in a minute here, we'll just quickly show you some of the key, larger projects that happened. This is not the smaller things like painting, or replacing a carpet, or stuff like that. These are just the, some of the larger projects. And again, not gonna read through it. The summer is always, of course, an opportune time for us, because if the students aren't here, so we can get into the buildings and do what we need to do. There you can see Hales. The auditorium, the air conditioning unit being fixed was timely for us. It cratered right at the end of last year. I won't read through all of them, thanks.
So just give us one or two from each school, because I don't know if people can see.
Yeah. So, the hot water tank replacement, for example, we had planned on that. We hadn't planned, if you take a look down at Lancaster, was the emergency repair of the hot water heater that went on. I wanna say, maybe a week ago, a week and a half ago, somewhere like that.
Two weeks before school started.
Yeah. So it stressed us a little bit, but it's fine, it's all taken care of. Some of this work is still in progress, because it's larger, like the troubleshooting and repair of the PA system, which is long overdue in Lancaster, long overdue. Some of this is, again, the high school kind of saw, every year, some, one of our schools seems to see a little bit more than others, and the high school probably saw the largest share of the bigger projects this year. But there were things that they needed to do. We added some parking spots at the front of the school there, because parking's such an issue. We did a little bit of rerouting on the parking at the high school this year, and we added just a little bit of paving there, so we could stage our buses to try to get them off that main road. So that you'll see, there's a little staging area there for that as well. So, that gives you a flavor. Other than that, the grounds crew just did an amazing job this summer, so there's some landscaping done, so our grounds crew did a great job. And of course, just heavy-duty cleaning throughout the buildings. And I think that our custodians, I thought, just did an amazing job this year. So hats off to all of them. Any quick questions on facilities?
Smoke detectors, right. So the Lancaster schools aren't that old, right?
Pardon?
Lancaster schools, what, ten years old?
I don't know.
You're a romantic?
I really don't at all.
That was the one just before the other. No, they're older than that.
I was gonna say, I agree that they're older than Hales. Hales aren't newest, right? They're Centurions.
Centurions.
Centurions, yeah.
No, because I'm just wondering, so maintenance-wise-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's closer towards twenty years, so it's ten years.
So are we starting to set up a yearly maintenance, you know, to actually go through? Because smoke detectors, maybe repair and replacement, I mean, that sounds like it should be at all the schools?
Yeah. Lancaster has a number of larger repairs that we're gonna have to take a look at, quite frankly. I mean, we've got some doors, or that we've got some, I think, some bigger things, that we're gonna need to involve the talent in on. Not ready to roll that out right now, but just know that we're doing a lot of things.
But I think she's asking specifically about smoke detectors in all the schools, cleaning, repair, and replacement.
I'm not sure exactly where it's at, any other buildings to be able to search for, Todd? Can you speak to that?
No, I'm not exactly sure either. I really couldn't give you that information right now. But I know that we've had some inspections in some of the buildings, and there's some ongoing repairs, and things related to fire protection, whatever.
That was through, oh, summer.
We're keeping right up to date with that. Rob has been addressing a lot of issues.
Go ahead.
Actually, I'm wondering about facilities and maintenance on all the buildings, as far as having a schedule type thing, like a typical, you know, this year, and under this, because-
Yeah, we do.
One of the things that worries me about Center is the, it's probably for all of them, is the filters, the units, you know. And you can tell they're dirty, because they're dirty, you know, you see them coming out. And I didn't know if they ever got replaced on a regular basis. So it's like, is there a forum, like, you know, we're gonna, you know, do Hales this year, and Lancaster the next year, and Wilt the next year, or we're gonna do them every year? I mean, is there some-
You know what, I would say, that's a really good question. To be honest with you, that probably ties into the larger picture of, if you recall when I first came in, even our inspections were, I was thinking, as opposed to this year, like, all of our inspections are right timely, like, in terms of the fire inspections and tank inspections, and if we've, like, I think it was a high school where we had to put a man, like, a man wipe-
A man wipe.
Yeah, and that kind of thing. So, but it does tie into the broader picture. We're just in the process of still creating that, like, a full cycle for all of that kind of thing.
So are we just starting, are they starting to actually, you know, make those cycles? So they say, okay, we did Lancaster this year for fire alarms, so we need to start looking at the other schools. You know, so that they know, when you start actually saying, we gave you the plan, we should get some history.
No, I believe that that's what Rob's doing.
Yeah, that's what he's doing.
Yeah, that started two years ago. So that's what I'm saying, it's part of the bigger picture, to be honest with you. But, no, it's a point well taken. The fire alarms, just so, you know, I mean, all of that kind of stuff was ongoing throughout this summer, in all of our buildings. So. And I'd like to point out that Stowe is saying to us that they felt that it was the cleanest they've ever seen in buildings in twenty-five years, he said. So we're thrilled with that.
Who's been there twenty-five years?
I don't know. I have no idea who it was, to be honest with you. But I know that he wanted to know what type of wax we used in our floors. So that's, those facilities. If we can go quickly to the safety mini-update, I'm just gonna go quickly through this, broader picture, I think it maybe was Lynn that brought it up, or something, maybe it was Lauren who said about the broader picture about safety. I went through this very quickly with our staff the other day, as well, so you're really getting the exact same slide that we used with staff the other day. So I'm gonna go super quickly through this. So I remember I said that we had three foci this year, for our school district and safety, it is the second foci. So the trainings, like, that's gonna continue to be ongoing. You heard me talk about staff, but you know that we've got students in the back of our mind, we've got parents right forefront, you know, in the month of September. Our drills, right now, we're gonna keep the traditional drills for students, just like we've always had them, the stay-in-place, lockdown, the fire drills, all that. But we are gonna front-load them, so they're all pretty much in the early part of the year, like, September, October type thing, rather than the traditional way of rolling it out. MERC, what we came to realize this summer is that our medical emergency response plans, that we've been submitting at the DESD, were out of compliance and certainly out of date. And so we've spent a lot of time through the summer pulling that together. We will resubmit brand-new MERC plans this year. As well, the flip charts has been a huge undertaking. Donna Lindstrom, when she was here, started to do some amazing work with the flip charts. Lisa came to me about midsummer and said, these are the flip charts. I think that they're supposed to be ready for publication, but I quickly realized that they were not ready for publication.
I don't think people understand, I'm sorry.
Let me go, the flip chart is something that's, that every teacher has in, like, the right-hand desk drawer, that you can open it up, and it says bomb threat. Here's what I do. You know, student death, here's what I do. Like, there's, no, it's in there. All those things are in there. And so, and it follows the statewide plan. And so, but ours is not as nicely aligned right now to the state as it needs to be, but it will be. And so-
So is that, you do it through policy?
No, it's not policy at all. It actually will, we'll go through our emergency medical, or emergency response task force. So it will, and it's been a separate entity for the last two years, and it will go through that group and then come forward. And so it's really laid out more by the state than something that we would do internally.
So that wouldn't be through MASC all the way down?
It's not MASC, no, not at all.
So MASC wouldn't be, I mean, I don't think the state would go in and handle it.
Oh, I think, I don't think MASC-
That's not this kind of thing.
Would supersede the state on that kind of-
I don't know, I wouldn't think it would supersede anything, but they were there laying out policies that we follow.
These are policies, though. This is just, this is specific, like, these are the-
Are they, pardon? The recommendations?
A bit above recommendation. It's not mandated, but this is what you should all have in your schools, so.
Okay.
So that's the flip charts. Crisis plan will come out of that. And facilities and technology, you know that we've been working very closely on that. And I would say again, and I said to the staff the other day, that our IT folks have been, have worked very closely with our police department. So our cameras are all interconnected now with our police departments, in case of an emergency. We also this year made sure, I believe, I may have said this before, but if not, all of our police across the district have the capacity to get into all of our buildings. So if something happens, and still our Lancaster police can come over and get right into the gate and access to our buildings. So it's really part of tying all of the three communities together for crisis situations.
So the camera wise, we've made them all typical, they're not, they're just mix and match, right?
We took some, no, I know exactly what she's talking about. We do have some mix and match, and actually what we did was, we had to make some adjustments on some of those mix and matches, so that it could tie in. So those mix and matches now, even though there's still a different name, still tie in.
So somebody coordinated all that, right?
Yes, we did. Yeah.
You've given some good answers tonight. A lot of questions you've had over the years.
So I feel very good about where we're at with all of this. I think we're, I think as a district, we're in a great place. So that's safety. So Todd, do you wanna do a super quick, we're coming down, we have three left.
It's all right, we're trying to do as quickly as we can.
So in terms of communication, that's obviously the priority. Myself and a few principals at the beginning of the summer met with Jay Stewart from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, where he had given us some recommendations based upon survey results, communication survey results. We met with him to kind of determine which recommendations we could really kind of latch on to and sink our teeth into. One of them specifically was around targeted district communication platforms, and particularly our websites, in terms of looking at where the most traffic comes from. So what we did was kind of roll out a plan to the administrative team to kind of identify a purpose here, and what the purpose of our communication is. And then we identified three communication areas that we thought were really paramount, one being around parent and family engagement, also communication internally and how we do that, and then around media and communication relations as it relates to our website, as it relates to Twitter, and all those kinds of things. And then we identified really three areas that we think we need to focus on clarity, consistency, and then accountability, and having accountability for that. We talked specifically about the website and clarity around the website. We've already been working all summer long at really cleaning up a lot of old information that's been on there that's outdated, and we've been doing that. Cindy Larson and I have worked in that in October, we really want to take a look at, you know, new, potentially new website formats that might be brighter, clearer, less is more, and really talking with each of the principals in terms of really having consistency on each one of their websites, because that's really important. We also talked about, you know, when you go onto the staff page, that we should have consistency around staff photographs. Maybe there should just be the name of the information versus, you know, a photograph of a rainbow or a legrand, et cetera. Because if a parent goes on and sees, oh, there's my daughter's math teacher, but they don't know who their daughter's social studies teacher is, we want consistency there. So there was some agreement around that. So those three pieces really around clarity, consistency, and accountability were what we laid out. And then what we did too was, we identified areas in parent and family engagement that we're already doing, such as open houses, and conferences, and newsletters, social media, handbooks, et cetera. Internally, same thing, email, meetings, professional development, and same thing with media and communications. And we have asked the administrative team for feedback on how we can improve in these three areas. So that plan is ongoing right now, but this is where we're at, and what we kind of have laid out to the administration, and we're still in the process of taking feedback on that, on how we can improve.
So I'm gonna jump in and ask you a couple of questions. So I can only speak for Florence Sawyer School, because I'm not at Florence Sawyer. But I know that there was, I don't know if there still is, a survey on how parents want to receive information. So I would ask you two things. One is just a question, and the other one is to urge you to do something. And the first is, is there consistency in the way those questions are asked? Because in the past, there wasn't. So what you're getting is, you know, and what may work in Stowe may not work in Lancaster, but for the most part, parents kind of want the same type of information. So is there consistency in the types of questions that you're asking, and then what's being done with the data that's received? So that's something I would want to know, because I think that parents have opinions on what works well for them and what they would like to see. And then the other thing is, I would just really try to urge, there's so many surveys that go on in this district, and the cleanup of, you know, do we really need a survey on this, and thoughtful, thoughtful about asking people's opinions? Because some of the stuff that's kind of like, oh, here's another survey, people are like, oh, it's just another survey. But we really may need to hear what they have to say. And I think that kind of may be part of, you know, what you're looking for when you're asking parents, or students, or community at-large members. If you could include that in some of your plans.
We've had that discussion, so.
Good, great. So when are you gonna give us more on this?
Later this fall, we're gonna come back and have a plan.
Yeah, we've got more already done on this. Tonight was just about giving quick, broad, we're trying really hard to be quick, quick broad reviews of the work that we've been working on this summer. So that was the intent. But there's more work that's been done in this area.
Okay, Kathy, what did you say?
I said, like, his question.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks. I was just wondering if there was any, if there were any communication platforms that we were advised maybe against, like, these modalities are probably not preferable versus these that maybe you should incorporate.
Yeah, we asked him that. Yeah, I would say yes to that. And you'll probably see that as we come forward, you know, you'll see us glaringly stay away from some and go after others.
So you'll give us that, include that in your update, Lynn? Okay, great.
Perfect.
Good.
And I was just wondering, all the homework that I got today from my daughter, was that hard, was that all coordinated with you guys? Because it was a different form membership.
What does that work with?
Or it was just parents have a sign, and she calls it homework?
Oh, oh, no. I think what you're not saying is something very different.
Okay.
So it just depends, like, what I'm thinking you're talking about, just like the free and reduced lunch, or the, all that stuff. So some of the, so in essence, yes, some of it was coordinated by the principals, yes. Because some of it, we realized that we have to do, because it's actually mandated, and, you know, we thought we could get away by doing it way X, and we found out, no, we have to, we can only do it by way Y. And so what you got today, yes, you're absolutely right. So there was, there were a number of things that were coordinated. We actually did the same kind of thing with our teachers this year as well. Last year, we gave them a folder with everything in it, as soon as they walked in. This year, we're delivering that differently too. So, yeah, just to be more efficient. That was a great question, I knew exactly what you were talking about. Okay, fiscal update. I'm just gonna speak really quickly on this, and I promise the residency mini-update will be quick too. So, the mini-update fiscally, this is just, Pat will be speaking in far greater detail, of course, next month, which comes into talk with the year end. But this is just, I think, Lynn, I was thinking more about you, actually, no offense, but remember you said, will we know if we have this number at the end of the year, right? So the answer is yes. So the answer is, yes, we did, okay? So in essence, we actually ended up with approximately $650,000 from the budget. Keep in mind that really, we borrowed that million, I wanna say this again, and we'll go into more detail in September, when we had that million dollars that we really tried to fill back in. So this is trying to fill that million dollars back in, because remember, we need to turn around this year and take $800,000 out of it for the next year's budget. So always keep that in mind, that we're trying to replenish that money to the point where eventually, we don't even have to do this anymore. That's the goal, the next three to five years, that we don't have to take out of that E and D, and E and D can stand by itself, right?
Do we already know what to take in the budget now?
Yeah, it's already in the budget. You'll see, like, yeah.
We can't cut it off, because then we couldn't cut it off.
Yeah. We're in no position just to cut it off. So anyway, so we have $650,000, and- So anyway, so we have a six hundred and fifty thousand, and then these were unanticipated revenues that we couldn't have seen coming, it was just a kind of like a fluke, but here's where we landed. So we got additional Medicaid revenue, this is long, this is stuff that happens long after the budget process, right? So this is, a lot of this stuff comes in like May, June, so you, you don't even see it coming in April. So Medicaid revenue is up, chapter seventy, that's something that happens probably July, August, probably more likely August of last year. There's an extra thirty-two thousand, for example, that came in there that we weren't expecting, and.
Can you tell people, I'm sorry, what chap, I'm going to do this to you all the time, just because people there listening don't understand, what is chapter seventy?
Chapter seventy is the money that we get from the state, kind of like the state's subsidization of Neshova Regional School District. And in this, this year, like, when we went to budget, the budget process, we had one number, and then once school all got out and the budgets finalized, which is generally kind of in July, then we actually get the real number. And sometimes it's more, sometimes it's less, this year it happened to be a little bit more, and so that money's carried forward, and so that, that's where that money is right now. So, and then there was some additional money in bank interest, some miscellaneous revenue, but, but, this is just a little qualify, there was also a reduction of forty-eight thousand dollars in regional transportation that we hadn't counted on. So that's one of those areas where it was lower than what we, what we were originally told in January, right? When they give us the money, right? So in essence, put all that together, we have a total of two hundred and fifty-nine, so can you go to the next line? So we borrowed a million dollars from E and D, we are going to have nine hundred thousand that we're going to be able to put back into E and D. And remember, we're looking to take eight hundred out for the, so basically, we came out of this year fiscally healthy to put us in a good place for the new, the new school year. So that's a really quick snapshot of everything, but Pat, I'll go into more detail, of course, in September.
Transportation is one of those ones we paid forward, pardon?
Pardon me?
Transportation, we paid it forward, that we, we already have the funds for the following, is that one of those ones?
No, no, it's not, it's not a year, you're thinking of circuit breaker, circuit breaker is one year out, always one year out, but the transportation is not.
So did I read that right, we got four and a thousand plus?
Less than we were told when we first built the budget.
And we took it out of E and D, the reduction?
No, it's included in that two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so forget, forget that. So basically, you've got the six hundred and fifty, and you've got the two hundred and fifty, and that's where you get the money. Okay?
Is the, is the governor's supplemental budget included in those numbers? Because I know at the end of the year, there's extra money, and he actually put some of it into regional transportation, but I wasn't sure.
No, that's all included in there, that's all, that's all in, what this is, is all in now. Now, keep in mind, these numbers could still change through our audit process, so that's always one of the reasons why we're always nervous to come into you right now. This is what we're projecting, this is what it's looking like, but remember last year, I don't know how many times you all asked, well, do we know if that cash is free, or the cash is certified yet, certified yet, and it wasn't, I think, like, way after Christmas, you know? So this is what we're projecting, but we, we feel pretty, pretty closely confident with that.
So we could serve it enough that we won't go lower than the nine hundred one?
No, what I'm saying is, this is what we're projecting right now, but it can change, right, depending on the audit.
It can even lower.
It could go lower, but remember, two months ago, we were sitting here thinking it was six hundred or lower, we weren't sure. Right now, we're sitting at nine hundred is what we're thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so that's it for the mini-update on fiscal. The last one, and this is just talking points only, so, and just, and I want to talk about taping for two seconds. Residency, I think, I, I think that there's still folks out there, whether they, I'm going to take a high road and say that, I think sometimes I don't understand that if you do not physically live in Bolton, Stowe, or Lancaster, you, you cannot have your child attend our schools, and we don't have school choice right now. And I cannot tell you the number of discussions I've had this summer with parents who have tried to have their children come to our school district in this coming year, who do not live here. And you can't imagine the stories that we've had, or some of the journeys we've gone through with different parents who felt for sure, and who said to us, my child is attending that school, and we said, no, they're not. So I want to put it out there that you have to live in these three communities to be able to attend the Shova Regional School District. I've never seen it like it was this summer, the number of kids trying to come in.
So have we actively checked?
Oh my goodness, yes.
Yeah, we don't want to go too deep into this.
But you're absolutely right, and we had a number of cases that we took to DESE last year. So we were very, you'll recall that this game was kind of grassroots, the school committee has had this as a topic for discussion a number of times. So I wanted to just update you today to say this is where we're at, it's still, it's an issue, it was a different type of issue for me this summer, though, than I've had before.
And it's not fair, because there are families who really, really want to choice their kids into our district, and we've said, there's no school choice, done.
So that's, the only thing I'd say is, you'll notice that we're, we're hand-taping tonight, but you'll also see, if you take a look around, we've got the addition of a third camera. I had mentioned at the end of the year that we'll be doing taping differently this year, and so they ultimately will be taping from across the street, and we'll have a TV screen here that will know whether we're on air or not. So this is a tie-in with the three, our three cable casters, we're really excited about this, we want to thank our cable casters for working so closely with us. This has been something that's been long in the process for several, several months, and so we just want to thank them, we're very excited about what's, what's coming next, so, yeah, and that's it.
And it's Nick, right?
Yeah.
And Nick Kessich is on the camera tonight, hi, Nick Kessich.
So that's it, I know, I know it's long, and I'm sorry, but I did say the learning at the front, it's going to be a net of dissemination of information, because just so much happens in the summer, and we're trying to just give you the snapshot.
I think it was a fantastic update, and I think, you know, it's important for people to understand the work that's happening, but we're, I think we're also going to be a little more aware, it's like, we have a tendency to talk about things that, that folks in the community might not understand, so we'll continue to say.
Does that mean, what does that stand for, that acronym?
Yeah, so we can kind of, as well, as our, part of our communication effort to help people understand. Okay, so we're moving on into new business.
I'm going to have Ann Marie, if you can do, take the, the honor of introducing our new extended day coordinator. We're very excited to have her onboard.
It's my honor to do. This is Raina Rego, Raina came to the top of our, our selection process, included thirty-four, I think, thirty-one or thirty-five applicants. We interviewed a good number, and we were really, really impressed with Raina's enthusiasm, you know, with her level of articulation of her thoughts, and with her experience, most recently in the Marlboro Public Schools as their communication lead, she was a, was like a fun relations type position within the school district, if I'm, if I'm characterizing that correctly, so it's my great privilege to introduce to you this Raina Rego.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
I'm going to appreciate being here, it's an honor. And in the interest of time, since I know that we are short on time, I'm going to use my notes to keep me focused. I just want to say that since joining two short weeks ago, it seems like I've been here longer because I adore the pink girl. I've come to know someone who's staffed, it has been a whirlwind, but I was welcomed at the retreat day one, and I was exposed to some very powerful messaging from Superintendent Clancy on empowerment and innovation. That was important for me to hear, because I think to be a leader and to make change happen, that we as staff need to empower, be empowered, not just engage, and I would extend that certainly to the individuals that I work with, and they in turn would inspire their students. So as part of the extended learning group, and I say extended learning, not extended day, it's a process, and it goes well beyond, you know, morning to day, it's, it's a process, that I feel inspired. And I haven't finished Innovator's Mindset book, because I've just got it, but I'm excited by what I'm learning. I'll spend just a few minutes telling you about my background. Fifteen years I spent in corporate communications, marcom for private industry, for Bose and a few other companies, and learned a lot about how to see the big picture, and how to implement plans that cross many strategic business units. So that was a wonderful background, and then children came along, and I became interested in education, got my master's at Leslie, and was in the classroom, you cannot count these numbers, okay? I was in the classroom for fourteen years as a middle school and high school English teacher, most of which was spent at Advanced Math Science Academy Charter School. I share that piece of information with you, because in that realm, you do a lot for a school district that's of that kind, which included after-school programs that I implemented, as well as mentor, the mentoring program, professional development. So it gave me a really broad perspective on grade six through twelve primarily. Most recently, I was at the Marlboro Public Schools as a communications lead, both internal and external communications, and I worked very closely to launch our digital platform, which was branded our district through Blackboard. It was a mobile app, a new website, and school messenger. What was helpful for me as a learner was I got to see seven different schools running in many different directions, and really, to Todd's point, how to make things consistent so that our families, our parents came to trust us more, and understand, especially if they have children in multiple schools. So I'm aware of that tendency to, schools want to be personal in their approach, but there has to be an umbrella or a branding effort. So I earned that perspective to my, my new role here, new role. I am the Extended Learning Enrichment Coordinator. I am trying to break the title of extended day, because I think that's a misnomer, and it doesn't represent what this, what this program is, which is ideally to address the whole child. I'm passionate about addressing children's emotional and behavioral needs. I am certainly wanting to connect with the academic side of our, of the equation, they're all important. So as I build relationships with staff, students, and families, my goal is to always think about the whole child. And I've written articles on that, if you want to look it up, I'll let you know where to find them. In any case, I'm also very excited, I'm really, really excited about engaging students to extend their learning beyond the classroom. It's not to replace it, it's to make connections. So in order for me to do that effectively, I really need to get to know the principals, and so I'm going to be spending time at the buildings. So if you're looking for me, I'm somewhere, but I'm going to be visiting every site on a regular basis. I want our programs to be meaningful and relevant, not to say that there can be programs that are one-day workshops or whatever, because sometimes those are really important, they just spark an interest, they light a fire. But I'm hoping that we, I can be cognizant of opportunities that students might not otherwise have, you know, on the soft skills side, so that they can say, you know, gee, I never thought about being, you know, doing robotics, or I never thought about being an engineer, or I never thought about cooking, or whatever it might be. So soft skills, I think, for twenty-first century citizens is very important. So I am right now kind of taking my kaleidoscope, and I find that to be my metaphor now, a kaleidoscope of enrichment. What is going to be most appropriate for what schools for what age? I'm very well aware that the middle school is immediately admiring some opportunities, that I'm well aware. Superintendent Clancy and I spoke at great length about, well, not great length, but at length.
It was a good length.
About, yes, it was, about the importance of that. I have that commitment, but I also want to couch it by saying that I want to do it thoughtfully. Probably late fall for a pilot of some sort, and then opening it up further into the spring. I am, I can't tell you how excited I am to be here, I just have so much to do, but my first priority is working closely with the staff. Staffing, relationships with the staff that I work with is so important. You know, I visited a couple of the sites today, and when I see the parents come in and feeling comfortable, and they're greeted by the staff by first names, and the, and the students are, you know, look happy, they look relaxed. They looked a little hot, but they were, were very happy, that pleased me to no end. So we are in full throttle, I can assure you, give me time, I'm going to be updated. At my first call back, I should today was to update the staff directory for extended learning, and use the name of learning. So you'll be seeing changes, and, you know, feel free to call me if you have suggestions, pick up your phone, email me, I'm a communications person, so.
So that's good, because as communications person, we're looking forward to your first report. Because you've got three on this committee that are communications people, so welcome!
Thank you, thank you, if there's any questions at this time or not, because I'm feeling that I was supposed to be. I was like five minutes, I condensed it.
I realize you've been here two weeks, but even though it's extended learning, a lot of parents depend on it? So what are they going to see, is it still, everything's still working normally?
Yes, we have, we're almost in for staffing at this point for all the sites. Our staffing is weak in a couple of areas, which I'm trying to bolster. The, we have a waitlist at, at some of the sites, but what, what I'm seeing, literally, almost every hour, almost every hour, is where things change, so at this point, I'm shifting gears as effectively as I can, so that we can allow more families to participate.
So as of today, there is some place for the kids to go up to school?
Absolutely, yeah, every school. And of course, we have hails to the fourth and fifth graders that come from centers, I even know all the names now. And I will say that we have had some interest from some of our high school students, which I'm very, I'm very happy that, I think that offers them a leadership mentoring opportunity. I'd like to see more of that where it makes sense. So at this point, I feel like I'm ninety percent with the staffing, and I want to say a hundred percent by the time I see you next time.
No, I just wanted to ensure that the parents knew that they had.
Oh, yeah, we've been on the website, yeah, we've been busy.
Yeah, I just want to say too, how much I appreciate, I know, I, I watched you working with your group the other day, and leadership, which I'm very appreciative of, you know, so, and I'm also very appreciative of what you're bringing to the table here tonight. So we're just so pleased to have you as part of our team, and I think we've shared that with you already, so.
I was going to bring some hats today, we're different, I said that might be a little.
You can show us that, you can show us that in your work, we'll be looking forward to seeing it, but thank you.
Raina, thank you so much for coming tonight, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Staff professional development update.
We're now, again, come on forward here, Martina, Kenian, Cindy Larson, and Todd Benmeyer. Now, we're going to see if we can, so here we are again, we're going to have to do this kind of quickly, as you all know, but we'll, we'll try to get through it. The flavor that we wanted to give you tonight is, I know that most of you know this, but sometimes folks forget or don't realize that we run staff development through the summer as well. And so this is kind of a bit of a review of some of the work that was done since we've last seen you, and a bit of a direction of where we're headed. And Martina, I just want to say you did a great job the other day on our first day back doing this, I, I just really appreciated that, so thank you very much. So Todd, we'll turn it over to you to start.
Sure.
First of the line, I was later, I apologize.
I was working on, it was acting up the tree.
There we go.
So I know the three of us met to put together, you know, the workshops that were offered over the summer, as well as the curriculum development topics that were offered over the summer. And I think you guys probably want to speak to that first, because you set that up before my arrival, so.
And I think we want to, I know that you already knows, but I don't think we need to read through all of them, but just some raw, a quick, a quick.
So I'll start off. So you can see that we divide our summer academy into two categories, workshops and curriculum development. And our workshops are, could be face-to-face, online, or they could be a hy, you know, a hybrid or a combination of both. We use inside presenters as well as outside presenters, it all depends on the topic and availability of people. For our curriculum development, we encourage all of our educators to work in teams when we're developing curriculum. We also require that they use our common online repository for curriculum, so that all of our educators have access to all of the curriculum, and that helps us strengthen building common learning experiences for our students across the district. So this summer, we had approximately a hundred and fifty participants in the workshops that you see up there, and we had forty more that opted to do some curriculum development over the summer. Some of these courses and curriculum development happen in the most few days, and some of them last the, the whole summer through. So just want to highlight two of them that were very well attended. First one, Mathematical Mindsets, that was a self-paced online course, just ended on this past Monday. It was developed by a Stanford professor, Joel Bowler, who researches a lot on the brain. And interestingly enough, this workshop was about how your brain learns when we make mathematical errors. So this was something that was open to all K through twelve math teachers, and I think they were really intrigued, because it was very well attended, and it did get good reviews. But it also supports our district improvement angle of co-teaching in the math classroom. So the other one that was well attended was the Innovator's Mindset Book Study. This course was also online and lasted all summer, it was self-paced, but it was, also had an element of. It was self-paced, but it was also had an element of collaboration. We used Google Classroom for that, so participants have their assignments posted on Google Classroom. And they were sharing inside of that venue, but they were also required to share with authentic audiences. So if you didn't have a Twitter account, you needed to create a Twitter account. And you needed to share your learning, share questions, and share products that they made during the book study at, on Twitter. And we use the hashtag Innovators' Mindset in the show, but if you wanted to look that up. See, and that also went with our goal for the year of empowering student learning experiences. So two examples of curriculum development topics. We're really happy to tell you that our K through eight health and wellness educators were able to work this summer to continue to update their curriculum around social and emotional learning, which is also a goal in the plan. And they cover different topics such as advocating for others, self-esteem, decision-making, substance abuse, those types of things. So that went really well, and they're, those educators are, they're awesome. They really work hard. And of course, that supports our goals around social and emotional learning. Another example is the Science Lessons Using Perdeck. That's a new science curriculum that was created in Perdeck. Now, so Perdeck is a software that we use. It's beginning to take on more, not every educator uses it, but it's interactive for instruction and as well as assessment. And so that went very well and it helps empower student learning experiences. And of course, it goes with our goal for effective uses of technology in the classroom. So following our, following all of our professional development, whether it's on our academy or during the year, we always collect feedback. And we use that feedback to help us prepare and plan for all of our future professional development. One point of the feedback that we collect is an overall satisfaction rate. We strive for a hundred percent excellent. Responses are still coming in because some of them, like I said, are just ending at the top of this week. And, but we're very happy to report at this time, right now, that we have zero for fair and four. So we think we're doing pretty good. And so right now, I'm going to pass this over to Martina, who's going to start with another piece of informative feedback that we receive from our educators.
So we just wanted to give you a little bit more of the picture, a big picture here, of the key takeaways that some of our participants shared with us through the feedback and also in general, their feedback on the experience. We thought that was important as pure evidence of kind of what people were taking out of their experiences. So I'm not going to read all of these, and I think they might be a little bit different. Actually, okay, there, you got the updated version, so that's fantastic. So just to, just to highlight a couple, in the bottom left, I learned that anyone at any age can learn math or anything and grow their brain. That refers to the workshop that Cindy just described a little bit of, sort of more broadly. I found the techniques to be very interesting and I can't wait to implement them in my classroom. Top left. I, I think it's something that we really consider as we're planning all of the professional development. We consider how do we support the implementation of these strategies with students. I know that sounds a little bit obvious, but actually a classic challenge with professional development is that people leave those sessions really excited about what they're going to do, and then you don't actually see it in practice. And we've talked a lot about how do you push everybody forward? So in our planning of this session, we've, of this series of sessions, we've considered and done the work of connecting additional PPs to lesson plans, classroom implementation, and reflection. We love when teachers keep us in the loop on the strategies that they're using. They're really happy to share them and we love the opportunity to visit and see those in action. We also considered that as we were planning our PD for this current school year, so that's a big snapshot of our plan for this year. The overall theme, as was already mentioned, is empowering student learning experiences. Through the Curus book, we've really started to think more deeply about how we can support the shift between lesson planning and just planning for engagement to planning for student empowerment and what that actually looks like. We've talked in this group already about, in this gauge of lots of information, how do we support student, students and staff to use it responsibly, and also how do we empower them to do more with that information? And we think it's critical for our professional development to also support students and staff to be connected, be innovative, and really know how to leverage resources to create new ideas that we want to see and solve problems that we want to see happening. So we're looking forward to that continuing this year. So just a very brief overview of the schedule. You've already heard about our experiences the last two days with the Alice training, obviously connected to our district improvement plan with the existing safety protocols. But going through that experience, it was really interesting to see its direct connection to empowerment of staff in terms of how they're using information. It was a great connection there, too. In September, most of our building, our activities will be building-based, however, Todd already shared that we're going to have some professional development around the one-to-one expansion and really start to have some specific professional development to help support staff to think about how that ongoing access to technology can transform their teaching and transform student experiences in the classroom. So we're excited about that. And then in October through April, we'll really dive into that theme of empowering learning. Some staff, the elementary staff, for the most part, will participate in that ongoing literacy professional development that we started last year, so directly connected to empowering learning because of the choices in reading, choices in writing, and personalized learning for students through that workshop model. And all other staff will have a choice amongst the topics that you see on the top right, which include accountable talk, that's about student-led discourse, and Innovators' Mindset Book Study, similar to what Cindy described this summer, student-centered inquiry that includes that media literacy that we just were talking about as well. And we really felt it was important to leverage some of what we learned through the Innovators' Mindset, too, to model the structure around what we want to see in the, in the classroom and just in our work with students. Having participants collaborate to research some of the topic that they choose, come up with their own problem of practice, create a plan and actually have time to implement it with students, bring it back to their groups, and revise it before sharing it out. So we're excited about that. We'll round up the year in May with Vertical Transition Planning, which is a great addition, too.
And March eighth.
And March eighth, thank you!
Bless me for that!
And our big event. So March eighth is our full, our full professional development day, and we're so excited to have George Burus, the author of the Innovators' Mindset, coming to present a keynote and also a couple smaller workshops. So we're just so looking forward to hearing from him in person, obviously, and looking forward to learning even more from him.
You know what I found interesting in our administrative retreat was the number of folks, like I know Pat, you came up and talked about your takeaway from the book, you know, and how it related to your work. And Tom Poole came and spoke about how he saw it relating to the food service and it, you know, so it's, it's very exciting to see this work. You can literally start to see it coming forward, so it's very exciting, so. Thank you so much. I, I don't know if anyone has any questions?
I, I think it's really impressive. So for a number of years, Lynn, I think you're the only one, Kathy's a little bit, but we're the only one that's been here as long as I have. And we're like, what, what are we doing? What is it? And poor Cindy would try to turn herself inside out. Fast forward to where we are today, there's a common theme, everything plays into it, everyone's focused in the same area, but they're identifying what it is and implementing it into their world. I love what you said about, you know, how do you, how do you take this and put it into action? Because it's only as good as the output to the students, right? And the impact on the students. So really impressed, thank you so much, Kathy.
One of the things I recall early on when I came on and even before that, was just, was out in the ether, that, that teacher fulfilling initiative fatigue. And I know that was something that we raised with Brooke when we were, you know, interviewing the superintendent. But this sounds like these things energize people. And there's the difference between having something that everybody has to do, no questions asked, and, and giving people choice and a framework for how it's going to make a difference for kids, but also for one's own professional life and collegial life as well. So kudos, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move quickly into Extended.
Our Extended School Year. So Joan DeAngelo and Steve Grant are going to speak to us about this. I, I think just for the purpose of our community that's watching too, I think we might want to give a broad overview of what an extended, the Extended School Year is. I know Joan, we made a lot of changes last year, and Steve, I saw you and Joan the other day, and we survived that, and, and I feel very, very good about where we are this summer. So I think we've done, you, you both have just done some amazing work in this area. And Steve, you're so, so dedicated to the program. You're there every day, you're always around, you have that great attitude that you bring forward to it. Just so appreciative of the work that you do to tie it all together. So Joan, we'll look to you to start this and then we'll turn it over to Steve to kind of wrap it up.
Thanks for having me, Steve, and I have the Talkbox Extended School Year. We're happy to be here to present kind of the work that we do over the twenty-four days in the summer that we work with students. Extended School Year is services that we provide beyond the traditional school year for students. And it's students with disabilities that we provide special education or related services to ensure they receive a free and appropriate public education. So during the school year, all students that are on individual education program, we are required to look at their disabilities and regression data. So it doesn't really matter what the disability is, we have to look at regression when students are away from instruction. So these services are determined by an IEP team. And one of the things that Steve and I have really worked hard on is data collection. We really put an authentic practice in place to work together to really say, we need to really look at students' IEP goals individually. We need to collect data when students are away. So if we're away during December break and we have seven days off, if a student regresses and doesn't recruit those skills, and then seven instructional day period, then we're saying they've regressed. So we're looking at reading skills, or math skills, or counseling services. So we're authentically now collecting data across all the breaks and instruction to drive decision-making that's authentic so that when we come to the table at an annual review meeting, we're talking with parents about the data that we've collected and what services we feel like we need to continue during the summer in order to support them and so they don't regress over the period, the long summer break. So I'm going to leave it to you, talk a little bit about the program, what happens in the summer.
So we have a variety of services that we offer on any one day. We have some students that will come in and just do some academic work in the learning lab. And that would be either reading, writing, mathematics, maybe a combination of those. And then additional to that, you have students that will come in for related services, that might be physical therapy, educational therapy, speech, counseling. And then you have some students that might have a variety of some of the academics and some of the related services depending upon what their IEP states. Additional to that is we have our specialized programming in the form of students that are headed to specific programming and programs throughout the district. So with our preschool students, we have our Little Links program, and then the programs work their way up to high school transitions for our students who are eighteen with us until they turn twenty-two. And in between, we have Links One and Links Two, Junior Life Skills, Life Skills, and Transitions. We added a program this summer for the first time when we added our Early Riser Program at Florence Sawyer School. We were able to offer an Early Rise/Rise model where some of those students were able to come for the summer as well, which was a new program for us, and it gave them the opportunity to come, work with staff, and continue to work on the skills related to their IPs. We have each week generally a theme, particularly with the younger students, where we try very hard to connect the outside world to the work that we're doing. So we have people in our community. So the Lancaster Police and Fire Department will come and work with the students, and the students get to interact with the departments and play on the equipment and go in the ambulance and go in the case car, and they really enjoy that. And I think that, I think the staff, I think the Lancaster PD, Fire Department will play comedy, it's nice. They love it. Can we stay longer? With time for the kids to go home, so. We have animal researchers, they've been coming for a number of years, and that's quite an interesting theme that we have because it's very therapeutic. They bring lots of animals and the kids get to interact with the animals. And I've noticed over time, since I've been the coordinator over seven summers, where some students, when they first started with me, would be very afraid of the animals, but over time, the same students that are with us for a number of years, you know, grow into being able to take risks and interact with the animals. And it's quite nice to see. We offer other themes. Weekly, we do a health and wellness theme, and we bring in a yoga specialist, and again, very therapeutic, she does great work with students. She's been with us for a long, long time, so she knows the population well. And there's lots of, you know, relaxation techniques and yoga poses and different things that we do together, and it's a really good calming activity for our students. It's, it's very nice to watch over time. We have also a number of experiences for our older students, where they get to go out into the community and work on the work sites. And it's typical to what they might be doing during the school year, where they go to different companies, restaurants, different places, central office, and they get to work those sites. And Meals on Wheels. We have a one student where we, that's in our transitions program, where her job site is actually working in the Little Links classroom. So we really personalize it because we know the students very well, and all of this is recommended at the team meeting, and then I just put everything in place, you know, throughout the summer. So I've seen it evolve over time. Wow, I didn't know that that was going to be something we recommend. And then sure enough, there's always an evolution to the work that we do with a lot of our students that continue to come each summer. With the social experiences, we've been able to even get some of our younger students out into the community. We were able to get the fan van from the high school last couple of summers, and we have our Links One and our Links Two students who will go out and go blueberry picking, will go to the library and just do some fun field trip type activities, which is fantastic. They, they really seem to enjoy, you know, those opportunities each summer with staff. And I didn't put staff on here, but I should note that we really have a dedicated group of staff that come each summer. In some cases, it's the teacher of record during the year, and they just want to continue with those students in the summer. Sometimes it's, you know, it might be a staff member from another building that enjoys working in summer, wants to increase their skill set, you know, work closely with a group of students that they might not normally work with during the year. And then in a few cases, we have some external hires, and we've had them for the last couple of summers now, and they've been really nice in bringing in some fresh air and looking at kids they've not seen before and worked with. But I, it's noted by the instructional assistants that may be in those classes, wow, you know, this teacher really was able to bring some new things to programming, and it's good feedback that we get. So we have a nice mixture of students and staff. And volunteerism, we've noted that, too. That's something that I've been working very closely with Mrs. DeAngelo's time for a couple of years now, where we've been able to bring in students that I may not know at all because they're at the high school and they're part of National Honor Society and they want to get some community service hours. And it's sort of evolved over time to that of students that may need a boost to get back in school or be connected to school or be in a safe environment where they can work with students that are much younger than them and no one else may be, perhaps in their peer group is present, and they just get to be themselves with younger kids. And that's really, really been something that we've seen positive effects with over the last couple of years. And I, every single parent of the students that volunteer, I'm in close contact with. And I call them before we start, I call them when it's over, I email in between. And the emails that they're sending me about what it's doing and the changes and the conversations they're having at home and the inspiration of maybe. and the inspiration of maybe wanting to go into public service and go to school and become a special education teacher or something like that. So it has a lot of other benefits that again, being the steward of the program over a long period of time, I get to cultivate those relationships and I get to, you know, bring out the best in everybody. And it's a very special time. We love it. It's a very, it can be challenging at times. We have students with very unique learning profiles. And there's a lot of care and time that gets put into those, the planning to help support them. And as Mrs. DeAngelo said, we're just trying to maintain skills. We want them coming back in the fall how they left us in June. There's something to be said for getting them up, getting them to school, getting them engaged with their peers, being in a morning meeting, being out in the job sites. Just keeping things fresh so when they have time off, when school gets out before we start, which is about 10 days, and time after summer school starts before we start up in earnest as a district, about another 10 to 12 days. There's that pockets of time where they can have their vacations and be with their families, but they're doing the work that's required, what is recommended at the team meeting level where we keep things where we'd like them to be. So when they come back, they can continue to move forward. And the data, I sent out those emails today because it's the first day of school and the teachers expect them. They'll spend now the next few weeks collecting data so we can determine if kids are regressing. We'll have students that won't come to summer school. They'll decline services. And again, it's a chance for us to get a sense of who's coming, tracking them, how they're doing, and what their regression looks like so we can personalize.
So Steve, I'm just gonna wrap up. I know you're ready to wrap up. But a couple of quick thoughts. Again, I think you both have done an amazing job. I know that we've made some nice substantial changes. I know, Steve, that I've seen some of those email flows back and forth, communications between the parents and you this summer. Amazing. I've seen some of the pictures that just melt my heart. And that kinda came through all summer long to me. And I think the volunteerism that you're talking about with our students that are going in now for two summers that I know of, has been in some ways life chang- I can tell you with all sense of genuineness, life-changing for a couple of those kids. So it's just been an incredible program. And I love the passion that you both speak with when you talk about this program.
I love the pride that is all over your face because Steve, I've known you a long time.
Very long. As a mom first.
Always a mom first. Always a mom first. But I remember you talking about how much you- But I never understood exactly what it was until you articulated it tonight.
Thank you.
So I would, I'm gonna say this because I'm gonna get shot, but I would love if you could just replicate that everywhere. That's amazing. Just the pride that you have, the influence that it has on kids. Kids who really need it at different levels. I love it. So thank you for that. And Joan, thanks for all your efforts as always.
I think Steve too, you've been just wonderful for this too. And I think too, I wanted to just refresh everyone's memory. Steve Grant is now the Assistant Principal at Luther Burbank. And we are just thrilled to have him there. So we thank you for that too.
I'm very appreciative of the chance to continue to work in our district and work in a different template and transfer those skills over and now grow those skills out, you know, with my new boss or a friend. I'm a Lancaster man now. I've been in Bolton for 26 years. So I hope I'm there for a long time. I really like Lancaster a lot.
Well, we're thrilled to have you there. Thanks. Joan, as always, we thank you for your work. You're just a rock star with us. Thank you so much. Thank you to you both.
Oh, that felt good.
So I think Pat, you're gonna come up and talk to us about some donations?
Center School donation from the Stowe Friends of Music and PTO. The memo is in your packet. So Pat, why don't you tell us, obviously we can read it and basically it's just?
Basically, we have a donation, actually two donations that have been made to the Center School. From the, one is from the Stowe Friends of Music for $2,357. Another one is from the Stowe PTO for $2,357. And this is for risers for the chorus at the Center School. And in addition to the funds that they've received as a donation, it was money in the budget to fund some of it as well. So they're going to purchase the risers for about $9,200. And Principal McCarron would like your consideration and that you accept this donation.
So we need someone to move. Go ahead.
I move that we accept the donation that totals $9,247.
No, you gotta do each one individually as the school taking care of that.
Oh, all right. So I move that we accept the donation from the Stowe Friends of Music for $2,357 and the donation from the Stowe PTO for $2,357 for the purchase of chorus risers at the Center School.
Thank you.
Second.
Steve will second. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you, Stowe Friends of Music and Stowe PTO. Okay, and now we've got the Nishoba Regional High School Endowment Final Grant approvals. I have a feeling you're gonna get some questions on this because there are some questions, but we'll let you present what you have.
The Shoba Regional High School Endowment Fund is dissolving. I'm not exactly sure how long it's been in existence, but I know it's been quite a while. And in doing so, basically this fund was used to supplement teachers' supplies, you know, different wants and needs. It may not have been in the budget. And the endowment fund has been able to provide these extras at no cost to the district. So there's a list here and it's approximately $9,800, which is the remainder of the funds that they have in their endowment. They're dissolving it. So we're requesting that we accept this donation from the NRHS Endowment Fund.
So I have some questions for you. So what's the total number for the motion? The total amount?
$9,771.
$9,771. And this is a parent-run organization?
Yes, it is.
And I think there was some kinda, it's gonna be a loss. So I'm hoping that at some point this can be revived. I don't know how that would happen, but it's gonna be a big loss. And I think that the people that have worked on it have worked on it for a long time.
Have worked very hard. And I think they've been a very committed group, very dedicated to the high school.
So we need someone to move the school committee accepting the $9,771 from the NRHS Endowment Fund balance.
Any questions? Can you stop us? Questions after you do that?
Yep. I need a second.
Did you pull over?
Oh, who's gonna move in?
I will.
I know I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Kathy. Okay, questions?
Okay, so there's $9,771 that teachers have been using for supplement or whatever. Where is this gonna go? Is it just gonna get absorbed somewhere?
No, this is where it's going and the details in the spreadsheet.
So they spent all the money?
This, so I think what happened was they were asked, who wants what? What do you need? And then they got all the requests in and the endowment committee said, okay, we're gonna give this one this. We're gonna give this one this. We're gonna give this one this and zero out the balance.
So it's zero.
Right.
Okay, so we're not accepting the donation. We're-
Well, yeah, we are. We are because we take, we'll take in revenue of $9,771 and then we'll- It's not dollars. It's not like cash. It's, it's, it's-
It was a one-time acceptance.
But they stopped.
But I guess the confusion that I have is we never accepted them giving out money before.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we have. So every time they send it, that's like-
I think this has been an annual thing they never use.
Okay? Anybody else have a question? All those in favor? It's unanimous and passes. Thank you very much, Pat. MRE Nature's Classroom Trip Approval.
Want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Principal Shea is requesting permission for the Mary Rollinson fifth grade students to attend a one-week Nature's Classroom. This will happen on September 17th to the 21st. They spend a week at Nature's Classroom in Ocean Park, Maine. And it's a longstanding program for MRE going back 25 years and is a valuable academic and social learning experience for the fifth grade students. And he is requesting our consideration.
You wanna move this?
I move that we have permission for the Mary Rollinson fifth grade students to attend a week at Nature's Classroom in Ocean Park, Maine from September 17th to the 21st.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Elaine, any questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous and passes. Thank you very much, Pat. That was quick. Alrighty then. The next item is the Central Office Organizational Chart. So this was a request from last year and Superintendent Clancy said that she would do it at the first meeting. And so here we are. It's in your pocket. This is, I'm gonna turn it over to you and you speak to it.
Sure. So quite frankly, there really isn't a lot of difference in terms of the positions. Positions are still all the positions. It's just how they were kinda juggled so that they will fall in part under the Assistant Superintendent versus the Superintendent. So if you think back to past administration, how that broke down, this is quite different. And so it's basically exactly what we've said we would do all the way along. So if you take a look at the Assistant Superintendent position, for example, you see that it's pretty much the academic component, the teaching and learning, the instruction. The technology will now fall under him as well. And if you take a look down the lower school administration, school administration still comes under the Superintendent, but there's a leader right underneath that with the Executive Assistant. See, that line goes straight up to the Assistant Superintendent because she supports both of us. So that's a conjoined line. Underneath the Coordinator, if you take a look at the very bottom slot underneath the Assistant Superintendent, the Coordinator of Extended Learning, our new Coordinator of Extended Learning, would fall obviously now under Todd because it's all joined with the academic. So you should see a really nice trend here for what continues to fall under the Superintendent as opposed to what will fall under the Assistant Superintendent. So under the Superintendent will remain the People Personnel Services. And so if you were to look at your old org chart, it's still almost identical. The Business and Operations will continue under there. The Human Resources will continue under there. The Facilities will continue under that. And the school administrators and principals will fall under the Superintendent. And then when you look at Todd's component, it's really the academic component. So that's where it sits right now. There are no new positions that are under there. These are all the same positions you have all along. Do you have any questions on what we see up there?
Do we have other new personnel besides Ms. Gray that was here? Like, we have a new Early Childhood Coordinator, right?
Yes, you do.
Is it Jen Decato?
Yeah.
Jen Decato.
Jen Decato is that new, and I think those are the only, Anne Marie, is that right? I think those are the only two. And of course Todd, yeah. I forget about Todd.
No, we don't wanna forget Todd.
Great question, Elaine.
Okay. All right. Thank you for doing that. I'm gonna do a time check, folks, because believe it or not, we've made up quite a bit of time. However, I'd like to move the Accountability System update because it is going to take a little bit of time to the next meeting because I wanna allow the committee to have their opportunity to ask questions. I think there will be a lot of questions. Are you guys okay with that?
Sure. I'll probably also have more information.
More information from Desi at that fact.
Especially with the email we got today. A week to lay down for more information we were supposed to get, so that probably makes a lot of sense.
Perfect. Thank you. So we'll move that one. How about if we do the HR update? Anne Marie, how do you feel about that?
Wonderful.
That puts us back on track and doesn't, you know, hurry the discussion along. We wanna make sure we have enough time to ask questions.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to present this starting year update from the Human Resources Office. Since we last together, of course, our big, a big summer. Summer's our hiring season. Yeah, summer is our busiest time and when we do what I consider to be some of our most important work. Become convinced over the years that one of the most important things we do in the hiring office and in the district really is to select well. That hiring the right people is one of the most, one of the best things that we can do to improve student achievement. And we're really pleased that we're able to have some part in that. The hiring decisions, of course, are made by the principals because they're the experts in being able to recognize good teaching. But we help them when we contribute to the process in the non-instructional areas, the areas of credentialing, licensing, and reference checks and background checks, making sure that the application claims that people are submitting are backed by paperwork. And we help to advance the protection of the students with our Cory checks for the messages, infractions, and the fingerprinting for anything within the country. Then once people are recommended and approved, then we make a timely and appropriate offer for them. And that's how we contribute. To be fair, this was a great hiring season. We started the school year fully staffed. There are no teacher vacancies right now. And of the 25 teachers that we hired, every single one of them is licensed, has the appropriate license from Desi.
That's amazing. That's just unbelievable.
I think we need perspective on that because we would expect that, so maybe you should-
Oh.
Maybe you should educate the group so they understand how important that is.
That's extraordinary for a district to be able to find an appropriate licensed candidate for all the positions, the ones that have got plentiful candidates from which to select, but also the ones that are harder to select. It's not, it's not common for a district to start, first of all, fully staffed and secondly, fully staffed with fully credentialed people. This is, you need to be impressed by this. And I think, and I think the reason, besides the great work of my hotel office, I think it's a testimony really to the reputation of our schools educationally and the desirability of Nishoba as a place to work. So I think you all have a big pride to play in that we do get people to apply. I wanna give you some numbers to back that up. We received and processed for teachers and instructional assistants, so the instructional staff, 1,995 applications this summer from people who wanted to-
Just let that sink in for a minute. Almost 2,000 applications.
I wanted to ask five friends to apply so that we could- And that doesn't even count the people who applied. Steve spoke of having some non-Nishoba people on the ESY program. That doesn't even count the people who applied to the ESY program, the people who applied for our coaching positions, the people who applied for our long-term substitute positions and our support positions. So this is the place, people wanna be here. For our 25 teaching positions, we've got 1,582 applications. Though the winner of one of the positions drew 337 candidates.
I can just think of that for a minute. 337 from one position.
Sorry.
No. I think you should make these public. Like, I think you should put them somewhere.
That's just an incredible number.
I'm so, I mean, I think it's so important that people understand, like, there's all these pockets of concern and areas. I get it. Everybody has a right to have a concern. But like, you lose the forest for the trees sometimes. Like, get up outside of it and I think we need to continue to share this kinda stuff.
And just think that when we had our new teacher orientation, one of the people sitting before us that day was the one who beat out the other 336. So I mean, you know that we got some, we got top notch.
Actually, we said that to them.
We did tell them that. We told them.
We told them that because, and I'm gonna put this out there too. You know, because again, sometimes you hear these, well, you're not saying this, but silly rumors. I mean, just, I mean, we can never combat the silliness of some of the stuff that we hear. But I don't know how many times I've heard, you know, through not our grapevine, but grapevines that are out there, well, I think administration has said that you can only, they can only hire first-year teachers. Nothing could be further from the truth. We have never said that. We have encouraged on occasion that you might wanna think about maybe hiring a little bit more frugally, but we have never said, do this. And the truth is, that didn't happen at all this year.
It didn't happen at all this year.
It did not happen. And so I feel that we got the best and the brightest in that room this year.
And that's a great segue. We have a very good mix of people with teachers who've got- We have a very good mix of people with, teachers who've got years of experience, some of them 12 and 13 years of experience, and some who are very early in their careers. And that's a nice balance to have. You don't want to have all one and you don't want to have all the other, you know? It's good to have that. Nineteen of our 25 new teachers have got master's degrees and several of the others are working towards the master degree. And I'll tell you, you know, they're an impressive group. When we walked into that new orientation last, last week, which was put on by our wonderful mentor coordinators, Ken John Tremont and Karen Mayotte, I mean, it was just, it was a room of people that you wanted to sit and talk to, you know, they were, you know, they were just inspiring. They were an inspiring group. Jen and Karen have, the new teachers have already met with their mentors, and they've had, like I said, the orientation last week with Jen and Karen. And Jen and Karen have already laid out a series of, 11 times, they will get together with Jen and Karen to talk about various topics of interest, either with Jen and Karen and/or with some people that come in in the first time, if that's gonna happen. It's next week is the next time that the new teachers are gonna get, all get together. It'll be like a cohort. Similarly, our instructional assistant candidate pool was also very strong. We received 266 applications for our seven positions. Our new PAs are college graduates, graduates, graduates without exception. Several of them got teaching license, I think two of them have got dual certified. They've all got experience with students, whether in a classroom or, you know, in the private sector, you know, in private programs or in other districts. So again, the level of competition for the slots, you know, here in Neshova is really a testament to our reputation. At our opening day on Monday, we recognized 19 of our teachers who have attained the career milestone of professional teacher status. Professional teacher status is similar to the old concept of tenure. These are people who have successfully completed three years of service to the district. They've received the recommendation of their principal for this, for this status, and they enjoy the support of the superintendent. So this is a huge career milestone. We read off their names, you know, on the first day because it's a, it's truly a big deal, you know, for them to get professional teacher status. So we want to make sure that we recognize that. They also get this letter in the folder. So I want to close by thank you before I ask you for any questions, by thanking my partners, Vicky and Darcy. Vicky Charterier, in addition to helping begin, and Darcy, in addition to helping all the hiring stuff go through without a hitch, Vicky has the additional duty, as you found out late last year, as the treasurer. And Darcy probably the most supportive district because she's the payroll person. Without her, none of us show.
And she laughs when she says that.
I would come even if it didn't mean it. And it's really, I'm very grateful, it's really pleasant to be working with them. So questions?
One of the things that you didn't mention, and I didn't either, was longevity awards that we gave out the other day too. We probably should have given some numbers on that. I think we might want to do that, just to feed that information back to our school committee members. We have a number of people that we've recognized for five, 10, 15, 20, and I believe we have about 30 here that we gave out the other day. And as much as we are so excited about our, our new folks that are coming on, our 25 new teachers that are coming on, I said at our opening day, when you take a look, look at the longevity awards, those are anchors. In a school district, those are our anchors, the people that have been here a long time that strengthen our infrastructure. So going back to your point, we have a beautiful blend across this district right now of new folks coming in and anchors that are there, so I would just put that up here.
Mike, yeah?
I'm not sure who to direct the questionnaire, so I'll just ask broadly. So given that we have 25 new hires and we don't, at the outset, we don't really know what their level of experience is, and of course, different levels of experience means different salary steps, once all those hires are made, how does that jive with the money that's been budgeted for those new hires?
So that's, that's a, that's a great question. I would, I can take that actually, and then Pat, if you want to throw something in, and Anne Marie, because that procedure for our central office is huge. And so I really appreciate bringing up, because I don't think people understand the depth of the work that's involved in that. And so we said, well, we, not Brooke, but your teams sit down in this very room, all with their computers up, and they start to match everybody up and whatnot to see where it all lands. And, you know, sometimes you're okay because you've got a position in there that might be the exact same or not. We had one position, more than one position, that came in around the $90,000 mark this year that we weren't counting on. So you're right, that's, that's a huge process that we undertake, and we start early in the summer, and I think we just wrapped up, well, basically, the last hire was our last wrap-up.
So as a follow-up, what happens when we under or over budget?
Well, if we were over budget, we would be coming and letting you know, but that's not how it happened.
Okay.
You know, it, it works out. In all fairness though to your question, we actually think of that through our budgeting process, like we anticipate that.
So let me jump in for a second, because, so when the superintendent comes forward with requests for adding positions, she gives us a range, but what we approve is a bucket of money. And that bucket of money is hers to use how she needs to in order to get things done. So we don't say, "This position is $63,000, can't go," unless it's one of the positions that...
The school committee has...
That the school committee has.
Exactly.
So it's the bucket of money that we're approving.
So as the bucket, as the bucket dwindles, does that limit the options for the final hires then?
It, it could, but it doesn't, to be honest with you, because I think our philosophy, because it's philosophical. I mean, there's a fiscal component too, but it's also philosophical. But our philosophy during my time here has been to get the best and the brightest within the dollars that we have. And that's what we aim for. And so like I say, I know that, and I'm not, I'm not joking when I say superintendents will often go and say, "You can only hire first-years," right? But we have not done that during my time here. And so, you know, when you've got somebody who's found their way through 336 other people, you've got the best and the brightest that you've got for that. But to your point, I mean, could that happen? That could, but honestly, I think where I was heading this summer is if we would have gotten to that point, I would have looked to make a cut somewhere else. Because to Anne Marie's point, as much as she can tease, this is probably one of the most important things we do as a school district, is hire right. And I think that we've done a lot of things in, certainly in the last two years to make sure that if we haven't hired right, we've dealt with it in an expedient fashion, and we've gone back to hire right.
Mike, you know, there's benchmarking, but over the course of the summer, right here, you know, Pat and Michelle and Vicky will sit down and, you know, and see where we stand, you know, because there's a lot of sweating, you know, thinking that, "Oh, my gosh, we're over, oh, my gosh, we're..." you know? So we do that in intervals.
It's ongoing throughout the entire summer.
Yeah, it seems like it.
And then they feed it back to me consistently, so I know exactly where we're at throughout the summer. That's a great question.
Well, Salita's fact, she told me that we recognized 86 of our employees for longevity of five years or more. And give them two minutes, I can tell you how many each level.
Yeah, do that just quickly, because I think it's valuable.
Oh, for goodness sake. You gotta ask, forget about it.
She's, by the way...
Give us the top ones, though. I want to hear about...
The 25ers.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's see. There are two 30s at the center school, preschool, preschool teacher, Diane Kilcoyne, celebrating 30 years, as is Karen Cermiano, grades, grades three, four. Some 25s, Richard Ketske, math department head, and a teacher at the high school. Timothy Kelly, he's a music teacher at...
Oh, wow, yeah.
Kevin Keveney.
There he is! Yay!
Congratulations, you're still here.
Poor guy.
And let's see, we'll do the 20s, Barbara Shaughnessy, she's instructional assistant at the center school. Joel Bates, has a bullet, 20 years. Sandra Bowles, she's a third grade teacher, she's at the Florence Sawyer's. Julie Lepka, Karen Sullivan, Karen Cavioli.
Lot of swears.
Lot of swears, let me guess, let's see, three or four at the high school. Cheryl Gallagher, special ed teacher, instructional assistant, Kathleen Patton at the high school. Leo Saploirian at the high school of the social studies. Judy Specht. Lori Brazili, our cafeteria manager at Southern Burbank, who makes homemade, like, everything.
If you want to serve a chicken salad, we have to talk to... Somebody else's chicken salad, it's not our thing.
Judy Carlin, high school floor at Southern Burbank, and Scott Rossley at Rollinson.
Thank you for that.
And Linda Milton, special ed secretary, last 20.
And I think too, I want to, I want to thank Alita too, because this is one of those things too that she, and by the way, she was also recognized this year too for longevity. But she, two years ago, when I said, you know, "Let's take a look at honoring these in a little bit different way," and so we have, at first I thought she was just gonna say, "Oh, my gosh, Brooke," but she's got such a pattern now, that I went to her this year, I said, "We've got to get all those gifts organized." Brooke, it's right here. It was all there. She had gone through and all, because we do give little gifts for each of the five, 10, 15, 20, and, you know, and so I think Kevin's nice gifts too. I think you might that, you know...
What'd you get, Kevin?
A bowl.
A what?
Pretty glass bowl with engraving on it, it's nice.
Oh, yeah, really nice. So Alita does that every year right now, and she has a certificate for everyone, so that when they come up, they, to shake the hand, they get a nice gift and a certificate too, so. Anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thanks, Salita.
All right. Wow, what a great night. I mean, thank you so much for...
It's a lot tonight.
I know, you said, "I'm so excited," and I was like, "Yeah, that's great." Now I know why you were excited. Okay, so we've got no old business, but we're gonna run through a couple of quick subcommittee reports. Steve, you want to give us an update on budget and warrant?
Yes, we had our meeting tonight, and we were scheduled to review the monthly reports, but they were not ready yet, so we will be reviewing them at our next meeting, which will be at 5:00 before our next regular school committee meeting. That's it.
Thank you, sir. And then we've got a, let me run down this really quick. I know we don't have a report for personnel, but can, can I give you school committee overarching goals to take a look at?
You know you can.
Okay. Please take school committee overarching goals. I think that they have been consistent with some tweaks, but...
I want personnel to look at that.
I want personnel to look at those, yeah, and make some recommendations.
We'll put in a very full agenda, we will do that.
Okay, thank you.
The correct team.
Terrific. Thank you. And policy, you'll have a report, you can have a report next time. Will you have a report?
I'm waiting to hear back about possible meeting, a possible meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you. And CPAC?
Just real quick.
Oh, yes, that's right.
We have an opportunity to help CPAC. This is going out, taking all the virtual backpacks, but it's worth us knowing about. If you go to Not Your Average Joe's on Tuesdays during the month of September and mention the NRSD CPAC, they will donate 15% of your check to the CPAC. And this is a fund there. I'm gonna go to Anne. Anne, could you put us in the paper, like, like an, you know, an article on it?
I'm sorry, please. That'd be for free, of course.
Kathy's our liaison to CPAC this year, along with Lynn as her backup when she needs it.
So in addition to, when you, when you go there and you give your server your name and contact number, you could win prizes, like a Not Your Average Joe gift card, admission for Ford, the Discovery Museum, and 18 holes at 16 times. If I win that, I will be raffling that off, and the proceeds will go to my own vacation fund. So, but anyway, Not Your Average Joe, if you haven't been, I think it's awesome.
That's great.
And I'm certainly gonna see if I can go...
So will you have an update for us on CPAC at the next meeting?
I will, yes.
Two weeks?
Yes, I will.
Okay, terrific.
Very good.
Thank you, and thanks for sharing this. Okay, communication advisory. So this year, we put in place a communication advisory to look at the communication structure practices of the school committee. It is not the same as the practices of the district and the administration, which Superintendent Clancy and Assistant Superintendent McGuire, thank you very much, are looking at. So I'm gonna turn it over to Elise, who is the chair of that committee.
Sure, thanks. So we have, at the communications subcommittee, met twice this summer. We managed to squeeze in around everybody's travel, and luckily not during the heat waves. And in our first meeting, we really just did a lot of brainstorming, you know, who are we trying to communicate with, what kinds of channels might we use, how might we better use the school committee section of the website to pull things out? And Jen, you can see sort of some of those discussion topics in the whole minutes, but we sort of talked through what are some things that we could do differently, or some ideas that we might have. And then in our last meeting, we dug a little bit deeper into, sorry, during our first meeting, we talked, of course, about using social media as a possible communication avenue and what that might look like. And in our most recent meeting, we decided to not make any social media decisions just yet, because MASC is in the process of putting together guidance for school committees to make sure that they understand. One of the key issues that we have to think about is that if we post something on Facebook as a school committee, it's subject to open meeting law and any sort of comments or discussion that happen on the school committee page, and so we want to make sure that we fully understand. And, you know, a lot of districts are, and school committees are figuring this out as they go, which is why MASC has been spending the summer starting to pull together some guidance for school districts and school committees to think about and understand how that relates to open meeting law.
So Elaine, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I wasn't at the second meeting, so...
So it's challenging for our community members and frustrating at times, because it would be so much easier for us to put everything on Facebook, because I think that's where a lot of people go. I disagree that everybody's only on Facebook, because I think that people are kind of spread across different vehicles. But I did contact, we had discussed this in one of our meetings, and I did contact the attorney, because there is a concern about open meeting law and deliberations, which are really discussions and making decisions, for the school committee have to happen in this room or in a public setting, and it has to be, anyone from the public has to be able to come into the meeting, or we can't do it unless we're in executive session, and in order to do that, there are specific reasons and rules. Okay, so given that, the concern that he had, and I really did try to talk, and if he's listening, Mike, I'm sorry, but I really did try to talk, I did the best I could with it. His concern was that whenever anyone who's on a school committee puts something on Facebook as a school committee member, that it automatically identifies them as a school committee member, and then if another school committee member jumps on, or if there's a discussion that starts that may not be appropriate, it opens the district up. So if you have a Facebook page, and it's your personal Facebook page, you really shouldn't be discussing district business on that page. And there are a whole host of other reasons why he was concerned about it. He's concerned about some things that are out there now, and I'll pull a couple of you aside and we'll talk about it, and I'll share with you why those concerns are there. But I think Elise's point is, is well-taken, that MASC, and I know that Dorothy contacted me three months ago and said, "We're thinking about putting this together, give me some ideas, what do you guys want to do?" So she's even kind of figuring it out herself. So I think we, it would be prudent for us to wait, not just until MASC has decided what they want to do, but I even said to, to our attorney, "What if we just put, you know, links to the agendas, and what if we just put links to the minutes?" And he's like, "I don't really..." So that's where we are right now. I think we need to respect the concerns that our trusted legal counsel has, and then, as I said, I'll, I'll talk to a couple of you offline. Lynn?
So, does the communication advisory have a charge?
Yep, it's in the, if you go on the tab, the school committee tab, and you go in subcommittee advisory meeting agendas, it should be in there, right, Elaine?
Yes, and I can read it off very quickly, because I have it pulled up on my phone. I apologize that I didn't mention that in my update. Our charge is to create communication strategic plans specifically for the school committee and present our recommendations to the school committee.
It's under assignments, it's the very first...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess...
So coming up, our, next, we will be starting to, you know... So coming up, our next, we will be starting to, you know, we took a little side detour to talk a lot about social media, because we know so many parents are on social media, and we wanted to get that out there first, and brainstorm a little bit about it. And our next step will be to really start to look at our strategic plan, and think about, you know, how do we better make use of space that we have on the website? How do we make sure that people are finding the information that we're looking for? You know, what other avenues can we explore that are not necessarily a Facebook page, but that are reaching community members where they are?
And what are, you know, what are those venues, if we're going to hold, you know, town hall meeting? Why would we do it? At what point would we do it? What would be the purpose of it? I had someone tell me last year, she wanted us to have a town meeting so that she could debate the school committee. Well, that, there's something not right there, so you need to have a discussion with your school committee members. There are traditional avenues, and I think we need to look at, and I think Elaine and Elise feel the same way, that we need to look at more contemporary ways of including that in what we do. Lynn?
I understand the contemporary stuff, from what we've gone through, I get that. But our website is the communication record, right?
The website is where all official information should come from. It should not come from individual.
So if that is the record?
Yep.
All right, and so anything outside of that, we're individually liable, or we're opening up the school committee or something, if we go onto any other media?
No, 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 no. I think the concern was that there's an opportunity for discussion to happen that kind of leads you into an area that could cause problems, or leads you into, like, there's a very active Bolton Community Facebook page, and I worked during the day, so people would contact me and say, you better look at this, because something's going on. And if I needed to jump in and clarify something, I would. And the other school committee rep at the time would, I mean, it was like volumes, and God bless him, but sometimes it was like, I have to clean it, I have to clean this up, but please, you know, so you just have to be careful with it.
So I'm wondering if by exploring these other avenues of communication...
That may or may not work.
That we are bringing the focus away from our website, which is the...
So you're looking at this from a black and white perspective.
Right.
It's, what is like, so Joel Bates and I sat down several years ago, because he was looking at his communications, and we put together a communication plan. So I'm going to use that as an example, so what, and this is not Lorraine's committee, these two ladies are, and you're the chair. I'm just giving an example, so, to help you understand this. So it was, well, when you have something that's urgent, or something that's critical, what vehicle do you use? Who sends it out? And is it a push notification, where you're letting people know something? Or are you engaging them? So if it's an update, and you want people to know, hey, just be aware, this is coming, where does that go? So it's what type of communication, what vehicle is it? And one of the things that we talked about was, and I'm not going to go down this road, because you're going to bring this up in the next meeting, there are different types of communication, like crisis, maintenance, and events. So what is the right vehicle for that, and more important, but more, I'm going right there now, more importantly, is it the school committee's role, or is it the administration's role? Because there's way too much crossover into the administration's function, which adds to the confusion for the community on who's doing what. Brooke got, Superintendent, you got a few concerned parents contacting her because of things that they had seen on social media, in other venues, and created problems, right? This summer?
Yeah, I...
But isn't that stuff that, that's heard, you know, you were the right person to fix that, not us?
Right. So we're not going to do that. We're not, we're going to look at, what is it that we own in our box that doesn't impinge on administration?
And then the other concern that I have is, if you're going to be answering, or clarifying, or whatever, are you watering down the Neshoba website?
No.
They should be getting their information.
Everything should go there.
It drives everybody back, so, you know, some people may go to the Neshoba website on a regular basis and be like, I can't wait to read the latest minutes from the school committee.
I can't wait.
But, you know, or I can't wait to watch the latest video.
Or we should be champed every day to see a meeting.
Right, you know, are there new, is there a new meeting packed up yet? I can't wait. But people may also not always know where to find things. And if you look at, like, what many of the towns do, you know, you can sign up for a newsletter, email newsletter, and when there's new stuff up on the website, or new things that you need to pay attention to, here's a new event, if, you know, you're getting an announcement sent to your email, and it reminds you, oh, right, I should go check that. There will be in no way watering down or different from what we share on the website in terms of the business of the school committee, but it'd be another way of ensuring that people who may not know about the website, or may not know where to find things, or may not know that you can find all the videos of every school committee meeting ever on YouTube, you know, help them find that, and ensure that we're reaching as many people in the community as possible, so that people don't feel like, I don't know what's happening, or I don't, I heard about this, but I don't even know where to find out more. But not a different message, it would be driving people continually to everything that is on the website.
So you're, so...
Does that make sense?
So what it does, but I, right now, nobody is looking, well, my impression is that nobody is reading the website. Nobody's going to the website.
Well, I don't know that you can say that, and we could get that information through a search chain with hits and pages.
We actually pay for that information, and I can tell, in fact, we've tracked the number of hits.
It is tough.
Well, I'm just saying, Lynn, do you track the hits? We know exactly what percentage goes to school committee, what percentage goes to classrooms. We track it all.
Well, it's just that I know that when I need something, I just call them.
But you just have, you've got a little tie in there.
But you've got the whole calendar. But it makes a point, it's the stuff, although you can write a little search in there, it is really difficult to...
But that's what Todd's doing. He's working on that. He just said he was working on it, right?
It's part of the summer, yeah.
All right, so we're going to move on, but thank you. I mean, it's like, this is the, you know, it's an advisory, it's our first time as a district having this for the school committee, and I think it's actually a really good exercise, and when you bring forward whatever we come up with, I think it's going to be a good way to remind school committee members and the community what the function of the school committee is versus, because we can talk about it all the time, but until you see it, it doesn't really make sense, and who do you talk to for specific things? Okay. Are we good?
We're good.
All right, so consent agenda, assuming that the meeting minutes of June 20th, 2018, and the warrants for August 31st, 2018, everybody sign, and we're good to go unless someone has a concern? Items for next agenda, yeah?
Oh, this is for the planning calendar, I had mentioned it the last meeting, a while ago, but in January, are we supposed to get a report from the high school about their, the thing, the PLT's?
The PLT's?
What's it? No, 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 it's, they hand out to colleges, and they, they...
Oh, yes.
I know there's a name for it, I can't think of it.
Oh, no, it's when Jody brings forward...
Their scorecard.
Yes, the scorecard.
Yeah, so are we supposed to review that, or she's, is that optional?
No, she presents it.
Right, we didn't do it last year.
Yeah, we're going to put it on now. It's there.
It is?
It was for the district.
Oh, good.
I was quick.
We build as we go.
I just needed to tell myself.
Okay, I've got like a million things for next agenda, so I'm going to read these off, if I miss something, and then Brooke and I'll sit down, by the way, we have to meet up, right? So Brooke and I'll sit down, and go over this list and prioritize. So we've got end of month, June, July, and August, and FY18 year-end financials from Pat. We've got, Kathy's going to bring forward, if she can, and you can let them know.
That's the end of the month, that'll be the second meeting.
For the overarching goals?
Oh, no, 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 I don't know that we're going to have time for the overarching goals in September, we have to finalize the superintendent, we have to bring forward the superintendent's goals, and we had that for the last meeting.
Okay, we'll talk, you can do it.
All right, we're not meeting until the 19th of September.
Okay, so this one comes at the second meeting.
Yes.
All right, and then summer, the summer effort Chromebook maintenance pilot, you're going to provide an update on that, Todd?
Yep, thank you.
You can kick the school committee manual revision down.
I'm looking at a different list, one second.
Okay.
And we need to get on the calendar at some point, the digital learning plan, three to five-year plan. The, so you're going to do the school committee overarching goals recommendations. The communication plan, we need to add to the calendar, we're going to report out on that, your strategy. And we're going to move Todd's accountability system update to the following meeting, and there was one more?
Is that the 12th?
Yes, please. What was the other, oh, yeah, that was it, I think that was it. Oh, what else? I'm sorry, there's just so much to talk about.
Is the Chromebook the 12th? Is the Chromebook first or second meeting in September?
I think that would be the first one.
First.
Yep.
Remember that you've got the accountability on there, too, the accountability update that's going on there.
Yeah, we just, yep, we'll look at it. Okay, so we're good on that. Other than that, I think we, I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So...
Stephen, Kathy's a second, please. All those in favor tuning in with us, thank you all, what a great meeting, appreciate it.